All right, welcome again. I'm calling to order this meeting, regular meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. We do have large print agendas up there, if that's helpful for anyone. Colby's got them. All that said, I'll ask our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fujirus.
Here.
Ernest Cate.
Here.
All right, thank you. We have, we're at item five on our agenda. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have any residents that would like to address the council, we ask that you come to the microphone, please state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief, also understanding that the council won't take action on anything you have to say tonight. Okay? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Brenda Linsmeyer. I'm the owner of Top Drawer Flea Market at 3480 North Thompson Street. It's in the McGar Carpets Building, and I've recently learned that I can no longer display items outside for sale, and therefore I'd like to ask the council for a use unit, or an updated use unit, that would allow my business to do so.
Okay, thanks. Brenda, have you, have you already been talking with our planning department?
Yes, I have been in with the planning department, and also with the code enforcers. And the use unit 46 that we are under was established a long time ago.
Right.
And I think it was a different culture back then, where it was kind of like a junkyard digging kind of ambiance. And that culture has changed, and now with, for instance, on our street, it's 50 miles per hour, we have approximately about five seconds to grab their attention to see if they want to shop at our establishment.
Okay.
Without having anything outside, we even lose that five seconds. There's nothing to grab their attention. So we feel it's imperative that we are allowed some things, even controlled, with rules, regulations, that's fine. But right now, as it stands, there can't be anything out there for sale.
Okay, all right.
So we're just asking for something that we could work with, or establish a new one, or an updated one.
Okay. Will you give Colby your contact information, please? He's right there beside you.
All right.
And we'll, we'll take a look at it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. All right, someone else?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Terry Trotter, and I am the president/CEO at the Jones Center, and I just came by because I wanted to say hi and introduce myself to you all. I started in March, so it's been a whirlwind. Somebody told me seven months now, which I'm like, wow, it can't be that long. So I apologize for it, for it taking me so long, but I'm really excited to be here. I came here from Michigan, although I'd been in Northwest Arkansas before, but I have been in Michigan, and everything that's happening in Springdale is so incredibly exciting, and is really what drew me back here, and just thrilled to be part of the city and part of everything that's going on. And we'll look forward to meeting you all more, and one-on-one, but I just wanted to come by and say hi and thank you for all you do.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Look forward to working with you. All right. Anyone else? All right, we're at item six, approval of minutes. Counsel, if there are no changes or additions, I'd approve, I'd entertain a motion to approve the mispresented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the mispresented. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Thank you. What's your pleasure on item seven, procedural motions, counsel?
I move for A and B.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Carry eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item eight, we're pleased to have Amber Paraden here with us tonight. Amber's gonna give us an update on some things going on, want to be sure everyone was aware of. Amber?
Thank you, Mayor. Am I just ready to click it away? I'm gonna give a short presentation here.
Great.
Should I just click it? Should I point it somewhere? Okay, okay. I could just tell you when to advance the slides if you want. Okay.
My name's Amber Paraden, and I am a longtime Springdale resident, a fifth-generation Springdale resident. I'm pleased to be here. I live right here on Johnson Avenue. You guys might see me standing in my front yard gardening quite often. I recently, in 2020, started working with CASH. Can you hear me okay? CASH stands for Creative Arkansas Community Hub and Exchange. It's kind of a mouthful, but essentially, it's a regional arts service organization. I'm not gonna go too far into what CASH is, because I want to talk about the project that I'm working on, which is the 214 Building, which is the former Art Center of the Ozarks in downtown Springdale. It's at 214 South Main Street.
Awesome, thank you.
So essentially, in a nutshell, I'm gonna try to blow through this, because I want to kind of brag on what we've been doing this year, to catch you guys up on, on what's been happening. So I started with CASH in November 2020, and just to refresh your memory, November 2020 was the, the height of the COVID pandemic, so I was handed the keys to the, the empty art center, and said to help reimagine the future of this space. So I have a background in visual art, have a degree in visual art, and so being a downtown resident, I was really honored to take on this position, working with CASH to help reimagine what this space could be. So in September 2020, the Tyson Family Foundation acquired that facility, and then partnered with CASH to sort of reimagine what the next phase of this space should be. So we've been working really quietly and diligently for the last two years. Okay, we can advance slide. I don't know if I need to... There we go. I did it twice, or we did it together. Just a refresher about the space. We have a 371-seat theater, we have a flexible gallery and exhibition space, there's ample space for meetings and gatherings, so if you guys ever need a space to, to hold a meeting, please let me know. We have three classrooms right now, that we're hosting artists in residency programs there, and we have a dance studio in a, in a black box. So we have 25,000 square feet of space that we're, that we're playing with. And so what we've been doing over the last two years is really moving slowly and intentionally, and responding to what the community needs, the creative community in particular. So at the, at the end of the pandemic, a lot of artists obviously didn't have a lot of money. Being an artist is, is already a hard career, and so you throw in a pandemic, when everyone's holding their money closely, they weren't necessarily spending it on art. And so artists were struggling to find time and space to create their work and money to do that. And so we've been working with artists on a sliding scale, artists and arts nonprofits. I'm gonna go through, so I can show you the next. Should I be pointing this thing at something? Is that me pointing with the arrow, or is that you? We can go on to the next one. Really quickly here, I want to just point out, we've been, early on, we developed a leadership council. This leadership council, this is not all of them photographed, but aren't they cute? They, we've been working with them. These are leading artists, emergent and up-and-coming artists in the industry in Northwest Arkansas, and we have a variety of artists in different mediums represented, from, let's see, visual art, we have musicians, several musicians, Rachel McClintock's on there from down the street, the woodworker, actors, event producers, and then we have a chef also on, on there. So we have a variety of voices and different backgrounds at the table, and these people have really been the leading force behind a lot of the work that we're doing, and we kind of gut-check everything that we're doing against this leadership council to make sure we're relevant, and really, they're helping us kind of spread into the community, too, and, and spread the word about what we're doing. We also have an advisory committee. We meet with them once a quarter, to just kind of bounce around bigger ideas, bigger concepts. These are professionals in the, in the industry that help advise us on sort of the more forward-thinking aspects of, of the project. Just really quickly, we worked with art space. A lot of you may be familiar with the work they did in downtown Springdale. I believe it was 2017, they were here doing a, a large market research on the feasibility of developing some type of mixed-use art space in downtown Springdale. We're working with them as a consultant, totally unrelated to that, to just help us develop a feasibility around how can we sustain this art center, and make it something that's viable in the community, that's longstanding, and actually lasts for the next few generations. One of these numbers is correct, 101 events since 2021, 250 active days. I wasn't able to get that number updated right before this, but we have been, since 20, January 2021, again, in the throes of the pandemic, we have been working with these organizations. There's some of them listed here, and these aren't all the people we've worked with, but these are some of the ones we're, we're really proud to have worked with over the last year and a half. We've been really active, 101 events over a two-year period. So we're, the, the building is very much alive and well. Really quickly, one of the events that we hosted was, we worked closely with the Latinx Theater Project. They rehearse and meet in our space two nights a week, and they produced a Dia de los Muertos event last year, and they're doing another one this year that has a theater component to it. It's a really beautiful piece. We also hosted Good News in the Blues. If you guys have met Orson Weems or Anthony Ball, these are people that I know the Downtown Springdale Alliance has been working closely with, and they pulled off, this is on our stage in downtown Springdale. The big picture is, and then the other photo is in our gallery in downtown Springdale, which is pretty significant to see a project like this happening right here around the corner. This event was really well-attended. They had a dinner party, an event, that had probably three, 300 or so people there. This is a theater production that rented the stage out, and a local producer, Taylor Dolan, came through and, and produced this project to happen on the stage. I was really happy to know, I've learned so much since I've been working there, that there are people like this in the community that are producing theater pieces independently. The Black Apple Awards, this was, if you've seen the Idol Class Magazine, those are free magazines that come out, that are locally produced. They have a, kind of a who's who in the arts community. They have an award ceremony every year, and we were happy to host them earlier this year, with 33 visual artists and three performances, and over 300 people filled the space, which is pretty exciting to, to have. Also, a little craft show took place. This was a big deal. We kind of won them over from Fayetteville for a season. They usually do this event in, in Fayetteville, at the town center, and they took over our parking lot and the, the facility. Dance and movement, this is, this has been one of my biggest learning curves. There's an incredibly deep network of dancers and movers in Northwest Arkansas that really don't have anywhere to, to land as far as rehearsal and exhibition space for dance. So we have seen a lot of requests for dance in the space, and so this is another performance, where four local choreographers were tasked with coming up with a performance, and exhibiting that in front of, in front of an audience, which is sort of unheard of around here right now. Is that my timer saying stop talking?
No. No, I've just had a warm.
Because I can just keep on going. I just have a few more slides. Thanks for bearing with me. Ground Waves, this is something, one of the reasons, reasons I'm most excited to be here tonight. So Ground Waves is a hip-hop open-mic and mentorship project that's happening right here in downtown Springdale with MERS, who is, let's see, he's, he's in the second from the left, from the bottom, with the red background. He's in, he's a hip-hop artist that's well-renowned. If you're into the hip-hop scene, you know who MERS is. He's from LA. He flies into downtown Springdale once a month to host a hip-hop open-mic night, and he has been attracting in locals from across the region to come in and showcase their original hip-hop songs. So he doesn't want you, he always say, says the rules, you're not singing over your songs, this isn't karaoke. You come up here to the microphone, and you, you plug in your original beat, and it's just the music, and you get up there and you perform in front of people. And it's a really rich network of people. This, this program started last year. We did it for six months, and it's back again this year, and tonight is the season finale happening right now. I might dart out of here a little bit early, so I can catch the end of it. But what we've witnessed happen is a cohort of about 20 individuals that are the tried and trues that come every single month, and then there's others that, that flow through as well. But this group, they come, they produce their music, they exhibit it, and they are so incredibly talented. And then the following day, they get to meet with MERS and have a mentorship session. Well, he'll meet with you for about an hour and give you any advice except of relationship advice. That's his, that's his shtick. But he'll talk to you about anything, mostly the industry and how to advance your career in, in the hip-hop world. And so he's true to his word, and he brought, at the season finale last year, he surprised everyone. They did a voting, and five of those individuals that were voted on got to open for MERS at the rail yard in downtown Rogers. So it really elevated their career and put them on the map, and a lot of these guys, just, and girls, just went to LA and performed at a festival. So all of that took root right here in downtown Springdale. And I got Jill Dabs that come last, last month, and it was absolutely, just to see her face, to see, this is happening right here, and not a lot of people know about it. And it, so I'll talk about that in just a moment, too, but it's, it's a beautiful thing, and what I would love to do is invite each of you to come down there tonight. It's a really welcoming spirit. Everyone there is incredibly kind and open. So if you wanted to come and check it out, and just peek your head in, it's an absolute joy. You'll probably get hugged and talked to a whole lot, because these people, they're very excited. So season finale, there's a lot of energy happening in the space right now. This is one of the last things I'll end on. Last year, we cooked up this concept called the Creative Exchange Fund. You know, when you're handed the keys to, to a former art center that has a longstanding, rich history in downtown, I was trying to be really sensitive to, to what has been, and how do we work with that, and step into the next era, and really let artists know that this is a space for them, and continues to be a space for them. And so I came up with the, the concept of the Creative Exchange Fund with my team, which basically is hinged on giving artists time, space, and money to create work in downtown Springdale. So we awarded over 50, it was 56 recipients received artistic grants to do creative projects right here in downtown Springdale. They have to do it at the 214 Building. And we, we gave $169,000 to those artists, and those programs are active right now, and in, they're happening from now through April next year. And then we're gonna reopen the applications in June next year to do the same thing. So with this comes the Artist in Residency Program, a music program, a curatorial program, where you can curate art to go on the walls for a quarter of the, of the year, and you can curate art to go outside. So if you drive by right now, there's a small water fountain sculpture that's out front. That's one of the outdoor curators that received money to, to produce that work of art. And then there's a Producers Grant, so if you're an event producer, and you have a concept you want to test or try, and just experiment, you can come in, and you got, 10 people got a grant to come in and do that there. And then there were two $15,000 grants to do something on the stage. And so those are coming up later this year. So this was our way of familiarizing artists with downtown Springdale, bringing them in, bringing in an influx of the creative and artistic energy that's in Northwest Arkansas, and highlighting downtown Springdale, and showing them that we have this really rich, valuable resource right here, that's really amplifying the, the creative conversation that's, that's taking place in Springdale. Looking ahead, this little triangle thing's supposed to be moving, but what I'm so excited about is we're, we've, we've been really slow, and I keep reiterating this, it's been two years. We didn't want to come out with a brand-new name right out of the hatch and step on toes. We really wanted to listen to the community and see what the space should be called. And so we're working on a new name right now. Unfortunately, I cannot tell you until we have all that solidified. But by, hopefully by the end of the year, knock on wood, if the stars align, we'll be announcing a new, a new name for the space, and we'll have a launch party where I'd love to invite all of you to come, and I'll make sure each of your names and emails are on that list to come. It'll be a free event, where you can come through and just see the space. We've not changed anything physically in the space right now. It's very, very much the same. If you've ever visited the Art Center of the Ozarks, it feels the same, but we'll have art on the wall and some music going. We're gonna have a large installation outside, from a local artist that's, he works in Vegas, and now works here, too, in downtown Springdale, and so he's gonna do a large thing on the outside of the building. So we're trying to make some waves over there. We've got some significant projects on the horizon. Our hope in the long run is gonna be a large capital improvement to the space in the next year or two. And so we're collecting all this data right now to see what the community actually needs and responds to, so we don't just build something that's not useful to the community. So that's where we're at, and that's what we've been doing. We've been just blowing and going. We've been so busy over there, and I recently was fortunate enough to, to show this presentation to, to Patsy at, at another event, and she was just blown away at what was happening. So I really appreciate being invited tonight to, to show you guys what we're doing.
Good deal.
And that's it.
Thanks, Amber.
You're welcome. Thanks for listening to me.
So we can show up over there? Can I go do some hip-hop?
Absolutely. You might bring the house down if, if the mayor shows up to do some hip-hop, but absolutely. But it is open to anybody. You, you put your name on the list, and, and they'll support you. And there's ground rules, too. You know, there's no hate speech, there's no, you know, there's, there's some things laid out, and if, if that happens, you're called out gently and brought to the side, but it's never actually happened. It's such a supportive group. They all really show up for each other and love on each other. So that's happening tonight until about 8:00 or 8:30. So if you guys get out of here and get an itch to go check it out.
Hey, Amber, where, where do we find out what's going on over there? Is there social?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. Right now, if you follow CASH Create, a lot of people say CASHA. It's actually CASH, like a G-O-CASH, or like a, a cache of treasure. CASH Create on Instagram, and then our website is cashcreate.org. And to see what we're doing is cashcreate.org/214. We've been calling the building 214 right now, which is the building's address, and kind of as a placeholder until we name the space.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thanks, Amber. Okay, well, with that done, we will turn to item nine, and Police and Fire Committee and Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item come before us, last committee meeting, and it was forwarded with recommendation for approval concerning our police budget. So I'm just gonna read the resolutions. It says, "A resolution amending the 2022 budget for the City of Springdale Police Department." This is, I believe we had some insurance money come in and transferred over to the budget, and Chief Gamble's here to expand on that.
Yes, we had a large amount of hail damage, as many people in the city did. I think we got hit harder with our fleet of vehicles since they were out working when, when it happened. So we're just asking to transfer that money back into our fleet maintenance account, so we'll balance our budget for the repairs that need to be done for our fleet.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to also add to that, Chief, talked to us last committee meeting, and they were awarded their tier-worn advanced accreditation, which is huge for our city. And, and Chief, I don't know if you want to come and kind of expand on that, because we have a lot of people who listen to us online, but if you could tell us a little bit more about that, and what it's gonna do for our city.
Yes, what accreditation does just shows that we are following policies and practices that are best for law enforcement agency in the state of Arkansas. It also makes us able to get federal grants, which is gonna be a requirement. You have to be seeking accreditation to apply for federal grants now. That's a new stipulation. So we've accomplished that by passing accreditation. So it's a good thing for the city, so we can get money for equipment, and possibly in the future, other officers.
That's awesome. Thank you very much, Chief. That's awesome. All right, we're at item 10. That's Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development, with our planning commission report.
Before I start that, I'd like to make the comment that if you've never judged applications for grants for artists, I, I suggest you volunteer, because it's the toughest thing I've ever done. And I've, I've reviewed a lot of grants over the years, but that was probably the toughest one that I've ever done. And they did a great job of selecting some great projects, and some great programs for downtown Springdale. And I was blown away. Who would have thought downtown Springdale was a hip-hop area? It was not on my radar anywhere. So I, you know, we've come a long ways, guys, from what we've been doing over the years. We have two items tonight coming before the planning, before you from the planning commission. The first one is a replat of Block 4, Lot 1 of the Sam's Club Edition. Planning Commission reviewed this replat, recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the replat of Block 4, Lot 1, Sam's Club Edition to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring emergency."
Move the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
And as usual, these carry emergency clause, because their actions pending on these. The next item is the final plat of Phase 1 of Deer Creek Subdivision. Planning Commission reviewed this. Final plat recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the final plat of Deer Creek Subdivision, Phase 1, in the City of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
So, Patsy, as I understand, there was an issue that came up, the planning commission concerning work that had been going on on this property. Is that common?
Well, there were questions and concerns about dust and noise on the second phase of this project that had started without a pre-con with engineering. I think that's all been stopped. And they'll work through that process. They just got ahead of themselves and started moving dirt and stuff before they had. There's not really any problem with this itself. It's the second phase, and I think engineering has, has dealt with that issue. I don't know that they have a pre-con set yet, but they will, they will have one shortly.
It's the second phase of, of the final plat?
It's the second phase of Deer Creek Phase 2, that, where we had the concerns over the, the dust issue and the noise. No, no. This one is already complete, in that it doesn't come to you guys until the streets have been paved, the water and sewer's been completed to a certain point before it comes to you guys. That one's ready to go. Once this final plat is approved, the signatures are all obtained, then it gets filed, and they can start transferring ownership of lots. They can't do any of that on the other, and Jason just indicated they've already had their pre-con now, and so those issues of dust and noise would have been addressed. Now, it's really dusty out there. And they can water two or three times a day, and it's still hard to keep up with, because it's really dry. We really need some rain, and, and I, I feel like they, they, the tension was brought to them at the meeting, and they'll do a better job of taking care of that as we forward.
My microphone's not working. But let me make sure I understand. Basically, this Phase 1 is complete. We're just...
Right.
Correct? So we're just accepting it now. We'd already basically approved everything.
Right.
So now we're just accepting the plat.
Right. When it comes...
In other words, we're taking control of the streets.
Correct.
And the infrastructure.
Right.
And the, and the roadways.
Right.
But all that work's already done.
Correct. It doesn't come to you until the streets are ready to be accepted, the water and sewer is a certain stage. Now, there may be a few minor things that need to be taken care of, but it doesn't come to you until that's all done. And then, once you approve it, there is a checklist of things that they have to submit before we actually sign, sign the plat, and that includes maintenance bonds, and warranty deeds, and releases of lanes on property, and all of those kind of things have to be in place. I signed the plat last, and until all those things are in place, it's not signed, and then they can file it and start selling lots after that, and then pull building permits. And I would imagine there's probably building permits waiting... And then they can file it and start selling lots after that and then pull building permits. And I would imagine there's probably building permits waiting to be sold for this. Mike says yes.
Okay.
They're ready to move forward.
Where is Phase Two in relation to this?
Well, if you look back, uh, Jason, you want to explain and I, because I'll, I'll lose you, but I think Jason can explain Phase Two better.
So the whole piece of property is, is about eighty acres.
Is that just Phase One?
The, the whole, the whole piece. So the, the first phase is only twenty-five acres. So the remainder of it.
So this whole yell thing is not Phase One?
So Phase One is basically the western half of this picture, the, the non-treet area where the pond is.
And so there was work being done on the eastern half?
And it, it also goes further north from there as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Do we have any screening requirements, you know, on any of this?
There is no require, screening requirements for residential to residential. The screening requirements come into place when it's commercial to residential or multifamily.
Construction as far as?
Well, they have to put up silt fences and those kinds of things to take care of the stormwater.
Should have been done when work was being done on Phase Two and it was.
I think they got a little bit ahead of themselves in construction because they had equipment and stuff out there. But I think through the pre-con, uh, aspect of it and inspections by engineering on a regular basis, I think that's probably been addressed since the meeting.
All right.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Second.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, thank you. Finance Committee and Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Uh, so Finance, uh, Committee has several issues for us tonight. The first one has to do with the resolution for payment of a, uh, bill um, for crossland heavy contractors on Harbor Avenue Extension. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor. We didn't really discuss this at Finance, did we?
No.
These are the ones that come straight to council?
These are supposed to just come straight to you.
Right. So when it says that we recommended approval, that's not really true.
Right.
Okay.
You're right.
All right. Just wanted to make sure. In, in any event, uh, I'll remind the council that this eleven A, at some point in time within the last couple of years, we just agreed that these bills would come straight to council and not to committee.
Right.
So I'll go ahead and read the title of that resolution. A resolution authorizing payment of an invoice project number one eight B P S one two.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Kay Denise?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Carry's eight zero.
The second item, uh, has to do with the, the, uh, council expressing their willingness to, uh, utilize federal funding for, uh, project, carbon reduction project. Uh, this resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. Mike is here to make, maybe talk briefly about it. I'll read the title. A resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Springdale to utilize, utilize federal funding for the following project, carbon reduction, C R P, planning and design.
Good evening. So, uh, we have an opportunity to apply for a, a grant that would, uh, fund, uh, a, a, a planning and design of a trail. Um, the grant would be a hundred thousand dollars and the city would be obligated to, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. What I'm asking for is just permission to apply for the grant, but we have to have council's commitment on the match before we can apply for it.
Let the resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Kay Denise?
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry's eight zero.
So item number three has to do with the city partnering with the Arkansas, um, Highway Department. For future planning of a trail bridge, uh, that would be built for underneath the future highways along six twelve, I think. Uh, this resolution was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. Title to this resolution is a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Springdale to partner with the Arkansas Department of Transportation for the I forty-nine to Highway two sixty-five, Springdale Bypass S, whatever that means, project job zero nine zero six two one.
Do we know the timeframe on starting with any of this? This is just saying that we're going to pay for the two hundred thousand for the project when it gets there.
It's estimated right now to be two hundred thousand. And yeah, that when, when they build that project, uh, then they're gonna make, they're gonna, we're gonna partner with them and spend that money so they can make the accommodations they need to for the, for a trail connection to go alongside it. So it's not cut off in the future.
So we're not locked into the dollar amount then, right now?
No.
Okay.
It starts in twenty twenty-four, correct? That's what they're estimating right now?
I think that's right.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Powell?
Recuse?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Carry's seven zero one refuse.
Item eleven D has to do with city selling certain properties to Leisure Homes Corporation. This resolution was, uh, forwarded from the Finance Committee with recommendation for approval. Title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the sale of property to Leisure Homes Corporation located at two two six McCullough Drive. I'm gonna need someone to refresh my memory on this one, Mayor.
This is the, you know, the McCullough Drive property that the city's owned for quite some time.
Mm-hmm.
We're, uh, selling it for a project, a housing project to go out there with, uh, Patsy several partners and, and, uh.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. Never remember.
And, and we, we had, we had actually looked into and I had talked with each of you all about the possibility of donating the property, but we found out we can't do that. So, uh, someone has come forward to buy the property and then put it back in the project.
Right.
Yeah.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Kay Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carry's eight zero.
At the Finance Committee meeting on Monday night, there was discussion concerning the possibility of purchase of the, um, building at fourteen oh three Powell Street. Um, at, at the committee, it was decided to go ahead and forward this matter to the council without any kind of recommendation and, and ask for a resolution to be prepared. So the resolution is before us. I'll read the title to the resolution. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a non-binding letter of intent pertaining to property located at fourteen oh three Powell Street, Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Other questions or comments? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Watson?
Uh, I, when are we gonna get that thing where we just push a button and, uh, everybody same time? This is a really tough one.
Hopefully February.
Yeah. I have a real problem voting for this without having a plan for this property. So I'm gonna vote no.
Overton?
No.
Lawson?
No, ma'am.
Bailey?
Recuse?
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Carry's by a vote of five three.
And again, we're, we're voting to negotiate. I just wanted to be clear. All right. Uh, Jeff, is that everything for you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Oh, no, Jeff, you do it.
Sure?
Yeah, you do. Sorry. F. You got F and G.
Okay, sorry.
Good job, chief.
I didn't do that. It's not mine.
Okay, um, item eleven F has to do with use of some ARPA funds. An amount of six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. Says it's gonna be presented by Colby. I'll go ahead and read the, uh, title to the resolution. A resolution to authorize the provision of government services for the citizens of Springdale, Arkansas from the American Rescue Plan Act, A R P A funds.
Uh, thank you, and coun, thank Councilman Watson. These two, uh, resolutions are, they go hand in hand. We did this last year when there was a proposal to do a bonus for city employees. Um, one of the allowable expenses for ARPA funds, once it is moved into lost revenue, is to pay what they consider essential employees. Uh, we did this last year for police, fire, uh, and our, our non-uniform workers as well. Um, we did do something different last year with the fire department to get them caught up to the police department. However, we're not having to do that this year. So the amount that, um, was brought to us was six hundred and, and a price, an amount not to exceed six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And that would be a thousand dollar bonus to all of our employees that are full-time and a five hundred dollar bonus to those who are part-time. And this was the, uh, this was a proposal brought forward by Councilman Powell.
So, uh, Kobe, I think the reason I was confused, I don't think we had the actual resolution at the committee meeting. We just had the, the motion to do this. What's, what is the difference here between eleven F and eleven G?
So, uh, remember we've, we've hired these consultants in Georgetown, Texas to keep us compliant. And a lot of cities have, have just gone out of step and just given the bonuses. By federal guideline through the Treasury, you have to take the money that was designated as lost revenue. There's a calculation for that. And so we had over nine million dollars that was considered lost revenue to the City of Springdale. So we took that out of the regular ARPA funds. Once you, if you, if you're gonna do the bonuses, we have to move this money out of lost revenue into what is in the next resolution, uh, into the general fund and then pay the bonuses out of the general fund.
So basically F is just moving it, moving the money?
The first one just moves it from lost revenue to the general fund and then the next one, general. Yeah, so you could batch this vote if you want, or you can vote on them individually.
I've already read eleven F, so let's just vote on that and then I'll read eleven G.
Okay.
Mayor, I know this came from Brian. What, if we didn't use this for this purpose, what we're, did we have a plan for it? Is it earmarked? Was it kind of, I mean, uh,
in the lost revenue, where, that's where we are, uh, what are some other things we're spending out of lost revenue?
Well, we're trying to see what to do about Fire Station Four.
Yeah.
They're still consulting us on that.
If we can build Fire Station Four, that would come out of lost revenue.
Yeah.
But we would still be able to do that, we believe.
That's right. And, and here's the other thing about this money from, the, the Treasury has continuously loosened their restrictions on ARPA funding. So the longer we play this game with them, the, we're seeing that we have more opportunities to spend it. So if you have regular ARPA funds, there's federal procurement guidelines that are very restrictive. Uh, so we've, as, as we continue to wait and we can move things into lost revenue, then move it into the general fund, it just relaxes all those regulations. So for instance, last year, we were able to move out of lost revenue, uh, the police and fire salaries and we moved that into the general fund. So it's been to our benefit that we've delayed spending some of this money. Uh, but we've given some of the money out of the regular ARPA funds to, uh, Northwest Technical Institute for their building program. Uh, Northwest Arkansas Community College to expand that facility for the nursing program. And we, we gave eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, I think, uh, to programming for both of those entities as well. So those are some of the things we've spent money on.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not placing you guys in a bind by doing this outside of your office. Because, you know, I know you guys are playing pretty far ahead, so.
No, it's a good question. I, I think for what we have talked with y'all about and hope to do with the lost revenue portion of ARPA, uh, I think we could, we'll still be able to do what we've talked about, doing this also.
There's, there's also a high probability, uh, I think this is going to happen, that we're gonna be able to take the, uh, police and fire, not just their salaries, but also their overtime and move that into the general fund as well. So, um, we, we still have over four million in the lost revenue portion, but there's going to be a substantial amount more that's moved, moved out as well. So there's, we received over twenty-one million dollars and we've, we've only appropriated a portion of it. So there, as far as it causing a burden on anything else, I don't believe that's the case.
Did we get a motion?
No.
Okay.
Did you?
Not yet.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carry's eight zero.
So apparently what the eleven F was just to move that amount of money, six hundred and thirty-five thousand from the ARPA funds to the general fund. And now eleven G is the resolution that's necessary to spend the money. So, um, I'll read the title to this resolution, eleven G. A resolution to authorize recovery pay for the city staff to aid in the responding, to aid in the responding to the public health and economic impacts of COVID nineteen.
Move the resolution pass.
Did you get it?
I wanna, I wanna make one quick comment. Uh, we, we did add a clause in this, uh, after it went in the packet that excludes elected officials. To make that clear. If, if you'll make that part of your motion?
I will.
I'm waiting to say it. Well, that's not on our, that's not in our packet?
It's a, well, it's not.
It's not in it. We need to add it to the resolution.
We've added it.
Okay.
Just exclude elected officials.
Okay.
Okay, everybody clear on that? And we got a motion and a second. All right, roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman? Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carry's eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, Ordinance Committee Chairman Mike Overton.
Mayor, we have two, two ordinances come before the council tonight. The first one is an ordinance amending ordinance number five four nine eight to amend the downtown Springdale outdoor dining district, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. And this is to extend, uh, the, uh, outdoor dining, dining district or the drunk district to, on Hawkins Street to include the new, beer garden. And I think, uh, uh, city attorney found, uh, uh, a change.
Well, actually, uh, Mr. Watson, uh, made me aware of, of a change that needed to be made in the proposed ordinance and the hours. The way it, the way it was presented at the ordinance committee was three, three P M. to ten P M. Monday through Friday and eight A M. to ten P M. 10 PM Monday through Friday, and eight AM to 10 PM Saturday and Sunday. The change would be to leave Saturday, to leave it the same, except change Sunday from 10 AM to 10 PM, because you can't sell earlier than 10 AM on Sunday.
So, in other words, a restaurant can't sell beer before 10 AM on Sunday morning?
Correct.
So it wouldn't make sense...
Correct.
...for our ordinance say you could carry it in a cup?
Correct.
If a restaurant can't even sell it that early.
It is, it's seven AM on Saturday, so eight AM would be allowable on a Saturday.
I move the ordinance forward with those said changes. Okay?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve ordinance. Any other questions? Yeah.
So Jill here?
Uh-huh.
Do you see any other foreseeable things in the near future of adding any more ordinance? Or are we gonna keep bringing this back, keep expanding this, or do you have any idea?
I don't think we'll, excuse me, I don't think we'll get any more requests in the near, near future. As we expand down Emma Avenue and more construction is, is resolved, I think we'll get some request based on the business development. We have a large mixed-use development going in around Luther George Park. We'll have festivals in that space in the future. But I don't, I mean, we're eighteen to twenty-four months out. The dining district's been in place, is it one or two years now? Almost two years. And this is the first, this is the first change to it, and I don't expect another one for quite some time. We did have a request to bring World's Best Javan pies on the board. The DSA board discussed it, and they all agreed, and I agree with them. There's too much construction between here and there to expand the district at this time. It just doesn't, it just doesn't make sense, and it doesn't add anything to the downtown.
Staff, let me ask you a question. How many businesses do you have in the downtown business alliances? How many businesses do you have in the downtown area?
We don't have a membership basis.
You don't have a membership at all?
No.
How's your board put in? You got a board?
We do. We have a board of, we have fifteen, we have fifteen voting members.
Are they downtown?
And nine ex-official members. Yes, they are all affiliated in one way or another with downtown.
Affiliated, but they're not necessarily owners downtown, right?
I think all of them are either a business owner or resident of downtown Springdale or associated with an organization that's downtown.
Well, you, you know I've not been happy at all with what, with you or the downtown. The communication, the communication you have with businesses down Springdale is not very good. Ma'am, I've been in business in downtown Springdale longer than you've been alive. Nobody's ever come down and talked to me.
Well, I, I did ask you for your email one day on a phone call, I believe.
No. And then I told you to come down and talk to me, is exactly what I told you, right?
And I have, I have come by a couple of times, and I've missed you. You've been closed at the times I've come by. I will continue to try to come by. Very nice to meet you tonight. And I think you'll find that I'm, I'm pretty accessible, and you do have my phone number.
Yes, I do. But I will say this, the commu, communications needs to be better. I've got, I'm still kinda aggravated about a flyer that you put out, demanding that I close my business down, basically, and get out, you know. Ma'am, I don't, I don't take demands very good. I've been down here for years and years.
It was just, and I, I don't know of any businesses that closed on...
Let me talk, let me talk. Okay? You know? But that flyer really upset me. My, people on my building has made a substantial investment downtown. Half the building that I am is leaving the downtown area. Did you know that?
No, I didn't.
Well, they are, and you're gonna have more failures. But I would say your communications with the businesses needs to be a whole lot better than what it is. All you gotta do is talk to me, and I'll work with you. You don't talk to me, I'm not gonna work with you. Just not. And I think that's where a lot of businesses are down Springdale. I'll get along with you. But your communication needs to be a whole lot better than what it is. Okay?
I move the ordinance be adopted?
Yes, sir, we've got a motion.
We already have it, Randy.
Oh, we did?
Is there any other questions or comments?
Yes. On the map, Jill?
Yes.
I think this is the map. It's got green and yellow.
Yeah.
And the yellow parts, part we're adding, correct?
That's correct.
Am I looking at this correctly? It looks like what used to be our state bank, that's no longer there anymore, is not in the area.
Though, where the hotel, where the hotels go?
Why would we not be including that on the...
There's, there's no construction. I mean, there's gonna be so much construction between there.
In response to Mark's question, we may be looking at adding that later?
That, that is an area that I fully expect to be added. There'd be a request from that business owner when those restaurants, thank you for pointing that out, that business there.
Well, it just seemed like we probably should have gone ahead and done it now that...
Well, you can, you can walk past, you can walk down that sidewalk and go, but you can't leave, the, the signs on the sidewalk show you can't leave there and go back into that middle area.
Well, that's where the, because I guess they don't have those parcels, they're not, they'll have the parcels there because there's construction going on, right?
Yeah, they're not allowing anybody on that property.
But once the, once that Greenway realignment is done, we will want that in the...
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, that is a very good point.
Yeah, the, the section between Emma and Meadow.
That's gonna be finished next spring. If y'all want to, you know...
Is that doable?
It does, the, the Greenway itself is, and but, yeah, the, the Greenway.
It is in there?
You're talking about taking it east to commercial? Is that what you're talking about, Mr. Watson, taking it all the way east to commercial along Meadow?
Yes.
You could, you could do that.
Well, we've already got a motion.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm not too concerned about it as long as the, because the Greenway realignment's gonna open up in a few months. So we wanna be sure that's included.
It is. It is.
It's already on there.
It's already on there.
Well, I mean, you don't want people walking in that construction area until...
No, people aren't gonna be walking through there.
I mean, that's what we tried to prevent all this time, is not let people wandering off in areas they didn't need to be into until it's time to do that.
Right.
Hey, the other thing, Jill, is I voted against this at committee simply because it just didn't feel right to me to, to allow alcohol being carried on a Sunday morning down Emma Avenue, because we were doing it to begin at seven, except what we were saying before.
Eight.
Eight, yeah. So now we can change to ten, which it seemed like, we've already talked that, feels a little bit better.
It's eleven now.
It's eleven?
Eleven.
Now.
Right now, the ordinance says eleven.
Before we do any changes, it's a less, so really, you're just expanding it.
An hour.
An hour.
I guess it kinda makes sense, I feel a little bit better with ten than I did with eight. I guess it kinda makes sense to make it line up with what the, the actual restaurant can do. I guess I'm just kinda talking out loud here. I'm really uncomfortable, I'm really more comfortable now with it. So I'm glad we at least caught it to within the ten.
And Jill, just another question. You said that, like, Damn Good Pies and Java, you had rejected them?
We just, not me, the DSA board discussed that as a recommend, as a, they recommended that what you're looking at on this map and the time changes. They did not feel comfortable recommending extending past all the construction that was happening on Emma Avenue all the way down there. That's just, that was just not in part of their recommendation. Council can...
But it already gets to Water Street, so you're stopping it at the gas station there, and they're right behind it, right? If I'm looking at the map right?
It, it stops this side, it stops, it stops west of all of that construction.
Right.
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 Right. Okay.
It's just on Emma.
So I remembered where I was going with my comments now. Sorry about that. I actually was there, as you know, Saturday morning for the halfway hall, is that what it's called? And there were a few people with beer, you know, the bicyclers, that one that stopped between the squares and had a beer, which seemed good and fine, and everyone was, you know, that was kind of a good thing. So I kinda see the need for the morning things now. And so I'm a little more comfortable with that as well.
And one thing I wanna point out for the...
Hey, Jill, will you pull that mic down a little bit? Thank you.
Sorry, I forget how short I am.
That's okay.
Um, one thing I want to point out is, on most Saturday mornings, there won't be any bars open unless there is a big event downtown. So this won't even come into play until the businesses are open that serve, I'll call it, just...
Yep. Okay. Is there no more? Anybody in the audience need to talk about it? All right. Denise?
Bailey?
No, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujarus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie seven one, does have an emergency clause.
Second.
I hate to keep bringing everything up, but where's the emergency? I mean, at one time, we were kind of cautioned by the municipal league to, to look at this.
You don't have any events coming on there.
I didn't know if they had something coming up that they wanted to... I didn't know if you had an, an event coming up in the next thirty days that you wanted it to go into effect immediately or wait another thirty days?
I do not, I do not have an event that's coming up, but I do know that Baja's Beer Garden would like to be able to participate in the outdoor dining district just in regular, regular hours. So there won't be any morning events that I can think of at all for the rest of this year. There are some businesses that are ready to start serving brunch, and I think you'll see an increased...
Well, the beer garden that you're talking about, they need this change just to be able to allow people to walk out of their restaurant.
They do.
Yeah, not, not necessarily the times, is what you're saying, okay?
Okay. Did we get a, a motion with the emergency clause, or no? No, yes?
Yeah, we have a motion second.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Ready? Harriman?
Yes.
Fujarus?
Yeah.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Emergency clause, Carrie's eight zero.
Uh, the next ordinance we have come before the council is ordinance amending chapter twenty-two dash ninety-one of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Springdale. And what this is, is the city adopting the National Electrical Code.
With no emergency clause.
Yeah, with no emergency clause. I move the ordinance pass. Okay, we have a motion second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Fujarus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie's eight zero.
Yep, next to our, our city attorney.
Next item is a resolution authorizing the grant of utilities, been across property owned by the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. This is, speaking of the Razorback Greenway, Greenway realignment project, this would allow SWEPCO to relocate some electric lines in connection with this project. Actually, it would get the lines more out of the way of the trail.